Third and fourth. We didn't as much at night. I have the guy. Please.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's. Oh, yeah. We need. Well. So. So. Smash. Yeah. When you.
She's.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah.
Just.
And. I want to. So. You may point your third down to. Back to welcome everyone. Um. Like the. Final sign that speak. Um. We have one item we need to add to the agenda. Um. Like to add. One item fourteen. Um. At the end of new business, they're closed session by Pinnacle Park. There's that motion for it. How about that motion? They don't have the motions. You have any discussion? No discussion, all the places that you hands down.
I mean.
All opposed by like signs, motion carries. So now I would entertain a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
What motion? Do we have any discussion? If no discussion, all favoration here and say.
Ah.
Although by like signs, motion carries. Um. Next thing on the agenda is public comments. And the first person signed up to speak is Sarah Hirsch.
Good morning.
Maybe bring a podium back.
Oh, is there a podium?
Okay.
Say that's good. Yes. Teacher. I'm trying to answer next to you. Morning. My name is Sarah Hirsch. And I stand today to ask for your support in this morning's vote. For the vacancy left by Natalie Newman's resignation. I seek to serve the town of Silva as a reasoned and logical mind, a problem solver, and an advocate for those who are often underrepresented. I spent my childhood in Puerto Rico and Washington DC. As an adult, I've lived in both rural and urban areas internationally and stateside. And as lovely as these places were, none have spoken to me like our beautiful town of Silva, my chosen home. After retiring from full-time university teaching in twenty eighteen, my husband and I made this permanent move to Silva. Buying two separate properties downtown, one of which we rent out to a dear friend. We also operate our antiques business, old road antiques out of our home. We have been welcomed with open arms in this community, and I have attempted to give back that love so freely given to us. I volunteer locally with many different organizations and nonprofits as well as local churches. I am especially proud of the three classes I give every week. Spanish to English speakers and English to Spanish speakers, with plenty of overlap for the two groups to connect. I also served as a founding board member of Silva Pride, although I have since redesigned that position to focus on other endeavors. My husband and I plan to spend the rest of our years in Silva among our close family, the Bartletts, and the good friends we have made here. As a candidate, I am pro-business, pro-law enforcement, and pro-alternative energy. You can see our solar panels at sixty Schulman Street. I am pro-civil rights and dedicated to equal justice for all. I am also passionate about outreach to our Spanish-speaking community, and I feel I can offer a great deal to the town board with my unique perspective as a bilingual, bi-cultural citizen. I am also very excited to get involved with Pinnacle Park becoming a five oh one three C. And since this natural preserve is a big part of what makes Silva so special, please sign me up for that committee. If chosen to serve the town of Silva, I will be a dedicated, conscientious, and ethical voice for the town and all its citizens. Thank you for your time and kind consideration. Y ahora para mis compañeros hispanohablantes, les doy mi promesa y firme compromiso de ser fiel representante para todos los habitantes de Silva. Gracias. Thank you.
Hi, um. I think my. Morning. For the past few years, people have actively and enthusiastically participated in the annual Pride Parade. The community now looks forward to that parade and expect it to take place every year. Taking that parade away, which is an established, well-loved event that's been successfully conducted for several years, is a bad decision. It's also giving people the impression that the town is withdrawing its support from the LGBTQ community here in Silva. In March, Mayor Phillips expressed in an interview with WLOS that he wants Silva to be considered inclusive for everyone. Mayor, to encourage the board to demonstrate the town's commitment to diversity, inclusion, and belonging. An important first step would be to adopt the proclamation for an official Pride Month here in Silva. Formerly establishing a Pride Month would not be a substitute or replacement for the parade. It would be a great way for the town to publicly show its commitment to and support for the LGBTQ community. You all have cited safety concerns as one of your primary reasons for denying parades such as Pride Parade and the high school senior walk. Uh, what happened recently with that senior walk really illustrates why your approach to street closures on Main Street is flawed and problematic. The consequence of your decision to deny a street closure for the senior walk created an unsafe situation that the police department ended up having to intervene in to ensure safety of students and their families. That's the path you're putting the town on if you continue your approach to large gatherings in town. What happened in the senior walk will continue to happen in the future for high school students, the LGBT community, and any other large groups they gather in town. Uh, additionally, your decision to continue having five events on Main Street that do include, do involve street closures uh, is hypocritical and seems to contradict those stated concerns about safety. When talking about why the events such as Pride Parade will no longer be approved, uh, Mayor Phillips also was quoted as saying, quote, "Every way we could possibly detour traffic is on very small city streets, and it's a safety factor," end quote. Those logistics and concerns about detoring traffic will also apply just as much to the five events that will continue to take place. Uh, so combining those statements with your decisions, you are either willing to forego safety concerns for the public on select events uh, each year, or your decision regarding street closures isn't really about safety. Instead, it appears more that the town board is making value judgments regarding which events are and are not worth having on Main Street. I think that's a bad direction. High school seniors and their families should have been able to walk down Main Street in both a safe and celebratory manner. And the LGBTQ community should also be able to march down Main Street for a very short amount of time on one day of every year. I encourage you all to adopt the proclamation for Pride Month in Silva, and also strongly encourage you to reconsider and revisit your position regarding parades and street closures on Main Street. Both for the Pride Parade as well as other groups to have the opportunity uh, to apply for parades and and use the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Great team, man.
I'm here today in solid, in solidarity with the LGBTQ community in Silva. With everyone in Silva who wants an inclusive and safe town that fosters a sense of community for all. Safety in town is a top priority, and your current pride, your current parade policy is incorrect and actually puts people in risk. The Smoky Mountain seniors deserved the time and attention they needed for their senior walk. The town board could have ensured the seniors, their friends, and family were safe by proactively closing portions of the street for that event. As you know, some of us have been walking the sidewalks in town ourselves related to your Pride Parade decision. We believe you made the incorrect decision re- regarding the Pride Parade and now also regarding larger groups. We know firsthand how difficult it is for these sidewalks in town to accommodate a large group of people. The Smoky Mountain seniors also proved that. You need to reconsider your position on all parades for everyone in town who applies, and you need to use the same formal and transparent process regarding all applications and decisions regarding applications for street closures and parades. In the meantime, the very least you can do is approve the proclamation for Pride Month to be recognized by the town of Silva in June. You've claimed that you want the town to be inclusive. Approval of this proclamation is the first step in proving that claim is real. The LGBTQ community is being targeted across this country and is literally under legislative attack. The people of the town of Silva demand that the government of the town of Silva not follow this trend. We demand that you show support for the people who live and work here, not only by approving this proclamation, but also by reevaluating your positions on parades. This is especially needed regarding LGBTQ parade, which is coming at a crucial time for people who are literally fighting for their right to live their everyday lives. The Pride Parade has been a staple part of the Silver Pride event for the last three years. People will arrive to this event this year and expect a parade. Much like we saw with the senior walk, people will spontaneously take up space. You can be proactive and ensure safety by working with the LGBTQ community on logistics to ensure this is a safe event. Approve the proclamation for Pride Month in June. Revise your parade approval policy to fairly and transparently evaluate the need to accommodate gatherings in town and re- reconsider or and consider sponsoring a parade for LGBTQ pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Big team, Rob.
Good morning. I am he, I am here in support of the beautiful and thriving LGBTQ community here in Silva, of which I am proud to be a part of. I attended my first Pride in Silva with my partner and children, and we walked in the parade as a family. This board has wildly underestimated the significance of that two-block walk for this community. I continue to hope that that decision will be revisited by those who voted no, especially in light of the senior walk where the idea of just walking the sidewalks was tested and failed. Now, imagine a much larger gathering, one that is comprised of individuals who are actively being dehumanized by our news organizations, our politicians, our community, and this board. Imagine how differently those headlines will read. And yes, your vote made you complicit in the act of dehu- dehumanization of this community. In addition, I have, I'm here in full support of the proclamation for June as Pride Month to be formally recognized by the town of Silva. This board has stated this town is inclusive. Like love, inclusion, a word that has no value without action. This is your opportunity to demonstrate what inclusion looks like. Here is why this is important. We don't have LGBTQ plus inclusive definitions and state family leave laws. We are not protected by nondiscrimination laws in our housing or our lending. It was only recently that DDPOs updated the language to reflect same-sex relationships and gay marriage was recognized on a federal level in two thousand fifteen. August of twenty twenty-three saw House Bill eight oh eight, which bans gender-affirming care for minors. House Bill five seventy-four, which limits transgender and gender non-conforming athletes. Senate Bill forty-nine, which bans LGBTQ plus content regardless of how age-appropriate from curriculum in grades K through four. It gives parents access to their children's school library records. I don't know about y'all, but reading saved me as a kid. And it's a forced outing bill. If a student requests to be called by a different name than the one that appears on their birth certificate or asks for different pronouns to be used, their parents have to be informed. Only thirty-eight percent of LGBTQ plus youth find their homes to be affirming. They represent thirty percent of the foster care system. That is double the percent of population. In addition, thirty-nine percent of LGBTQ plus youth seriously considered suicide last year. Twelve percent of them attempted it. Ninety percent reported their well-being being negatively impacted due to recent politics. Nearly half experienced bullying persons. Thirty-nine percent of these children and their families have said that they have contemplated leaving their state due to these continued laws. And LGBTQ plus youth who reported living in accepting, very accepted in my communities, attempted suicide at half those rates. As I stated in my opening, this board wildly underestimated the importance of the Pride Parade. Given the current political landscape, this was not the time to take away something as big and as important as visibility. Either you didn't take the time to consider it, or you did and you didn't care. Your actions today in regards to this block proclamation can tell us which one of those it was. And to make it abundantly clear, I'm not asking for support of this, I'm asking for support of this proclamation and there are no buts or insteads here. Support inclusion and allyship is both the proclamation and the parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, um. You in for higher?
Hi.
Most.
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, everyone who's talked before me. If we were looking at statistics specifically, we wouldn't be here because you would have voted yes, so I'll keep going. I am speaking to ask you as a town board to approve the inclusive Pride proclamation for the month of June. As someone who grew up here and now works in town, it is very important for me to be able to express my wishes for certain things that mean a lot to not only me, but many of us with you. It is not your job to vote on this whether or not you personally think it's okay to be LGBT, or if you are an ally or queer yourself. This is about making sure the town and tourists who visit whom you donate plenty of time to as well, uh, feel welcome here and choose to stay and spend their money. It is your job to be present here and vote, listen to all of your neighbors, and vote for what is best and not for what you believe is best for you and your personal life. Please do not rush to say no, like you did for the Pride Parade, and give a moment to vote for inclusivity for everyone. This is the first step in correcting your perceived behavior of homophobia and discrimination for voting down the parade under the guise of safety and logistics. And reaffirming the town's public positive stance for the LGBT community who live here. I also ask you to bring the vote for the parade back to the table. As a town, like towns across America, we should celebrate the diversity of all our neighbors by having parades. The least you can do to prove you are a town that is accepting and inclusive, no matter your own personal politics, is to vote yes on this proclamation. This statement is inclusive and needs to be adopted by the town board. I read the statement myself and was like, whoa, someone loved us who wrote this, or whoever wrote this proclamation, thank you. Because it's a stat. I also shouldn't have to reiterate the safety concerns that were described by the town police after the Silva SMHS accidental, non-approved parade took place. They should have had a parade. They should have had a parade. They should have had a parade. Just as much as everyone else in this town. All of our gatherings should have space. We will march anyway, you all know that. Thank you for listening. I'll see you soon.
Thank you. And. It's real shut.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm here to first both voice my support for the proclamation. Uh, I'm also a founding board member of the uh, Silva Pride Board and have been um, a participant in planning the Pride uh, event every year up until this year. Um, so the proclamation did great, like Jen said, very inclusive. One thing I do want to point out, because it's something that has been, had to be pointed out to me multiple times in my role as an event planner with the Silva Pride Parade, uh, not just the parade, the entire event. Uh, this proclamation does not consent to account the fact that our pride community also consists of a disability community. And while I understand that the proclamation is specifically LGBTQ, the disability community has a huge part in the Silva Pride event. Um, y'all may or may not know downtown Silva and the events that we throw are not particularly friendly to disabled people who have different mobility issues, who cannot cross the street because there's not auditory like signaling. Um, and so if you go to Pride, you will see more disabled people than you do at other events, and that is because they are vocal in planning the arrangements, the accommodations, the language that is used in order for them to be able to be present at this event. And that has gone from everything from, again, the language, where we placed bathrooms, where we placed vendors, including the parade route that was chosen, that was for our disabled community to be able to participate. And so as we're talking about all of these alternatives, right, we're gonna walk across the sidewalks, we're gonna have bike parades, like, that doesn't answer for everybody. And so what are we doing that the disabled people who also consider themselves to be part of this community and are intent, like, not in, I won't say intentionally, but they are excluded very, very um, explicitly in a lot of our recreation that happens downtown. And I welcome any of y'all to challenge me and let me know the last thing that y'all saw. A lot of differently accessible people acts. Um, I would say, and like I said, I don't remember if I said this, but as a Pride Board member, the first Pride that I ever attended as a queer person was the one that I organized. And so I've had a ton of people come up to me and say how much it has meant to them to walk down the street with their partner, with who they are, being who they are. And so that's what's being taken away, and surely we are a smart enough group to logistically figure out how to make that work, right? Especially when people are offering to foot the bill for it. So um, in in alignment with yes and, yes, thank you for the proclamation. And since you mentioned the Stonewall riots in it, I want to mention two of the people who are in the Stonewall riots, right, the the people that we hold up high. A black trans woman named Marsha P. Johnson was murdered and found in the river, and Sylvia Rivera lived unsheltered for years before she died. So having a one-month proclamation celebration does nothing for the people in this town who are still being discriminated against in their housing, in their jobs, in the kind of care they can access, in the kind of medical treatment they can afford, and our disabled community and where they're able to attend things. So um, thank you.
Thank you. That's, so I think that you didn't want to sign the, the, right? So moving on. We do our, uh, start with Mayor's report. Um. Um. Was absent at our last meeting, and I'm very grateful for Mary taking my place and allowing me to go on a little trip moving on. Um. We had a very educational trip to uh, Weddigenburg, Virginia, Washington DC. So uh, uh, I didn't get the opportunity in the midst of it to say my gratitude to uh, Mark and Tammy Haskett for the wonderful job they did with Grand Up Mountains. Missed my opportunity, and others have already said that, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge their hard work. Um, and uh, that's all I have today. Mr. Mary?
My daughter has been sick with a stomach bug the last two days, so out of precaution, I'm wearing a mask, so uh, I hope I don't come down with it too. I just want to let you know why I'm wearing a mask. Um, library turned up for the quarterly meeting yesterday, and there's a lot of great activities planned this summer uh, for RU. Uh, so there's gonna be a opportunity for a bingo um, community event where you fill out hive up, down, across uh, activities that you do, turn your bingo card into the library and win uh, an opportunity at a raffle for some of our local Main Street businesses. Uh, there's a lot more activities that are happening at the library that I won't go into right now, but if you could check Mary for Silva Facebook post. I'll get those posted today. Thank you.
You. Right, right. Um. Nothing specific to report, other than I've seen, uh, I think everyone has seen a really increase in public input over the last few weeks. Um, and I just want to publicly uh, say thank you for that. Uh, we need more input from the public. A lot of these meetings are largely unattended. Uh, just in my short term of time of service, there's been weeks where um, I haven't, and I imagine not many people on the board have heard much from the public. Public input is needed uh, even more. So I want to thank everyone who has given us input over the last few weeks and encourage you all to keep doing that and encourage other citizens of Silva to give us more input as needed. Thank you.
Uh, I have nothing to report today. Thank you. Um. Manager for board.
Good morning. Let's take you all, the Jackson County ABC's board's budget is just for you to review. Our budget's currently being advertised in the paper. It's also in our website, and please let, don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. Our next meeting, May the thirtieth, is our public hearing on the budget. And also, that's an additional meeting to swear in the new commissioner of the selected. For an employment update, Steve Schuler retired from Public Works last week after sixteen and a half years with the town. So we wish Steve a very happy retirement. We're currently accepting applications for a maintenance technician position. I attended the School of Government Supportable Housing Seminar last week in Marion's. I learned a lot about low-income tax credit housing programs and other housing programs that are available. And the town staff had their open enrollment for supplemental benefits, and I want to thank Amanda for coordinating that. We're very grateful. And a reminder, town offices are closed for Memorial Day. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Of the porch.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, we have completed plans for the Bryson Park renovations. Those plans have been sent to Colin Tractors. Expect to get some prices uh, by the end of the week. All that will be. We'll be making that selection quickly. Um. Going along with that, we have a tentative mid-July start date for the playground construction at Bryson Park as well. Uh, we, and we have some leeway with that to coordinate as closely with the renovations of the pavilion uh, as possible. Paige and I met with a representative from the Department of Parks, Rec, and Tourism at Pinnacle Park yesterday for a pre-approval meeting. Park grants have been applied for uh, to help him implement that master plan. Uh, does not, doesn't mean we're approved, it's just first part of the step, hopefully towards approval for that. They're gonna uh, make those selections and awards in August. We'll keep you posted on that. Haven on Second Avenue, First Avenue, and a part of Oakwood Lane will commence next month early. And as Paige said, I'd like to wish uh, Steve Schuler well in his retirement. We are advertising his position currently. Uh, the Rotary Club Service Day at Poty Park was rained out. It's been rescheduled for uh, June the fourteenth and the fifteenth. So if you'll help us spread the word about that, get a good volunteer turnout, we appreciate it. Any question?
Thank you, Jake. Switched off.
Good morning, everybody. I'm gonna give a pretty brief report for morning. First thing I'll say is today is the Battle of the Badges. It's the blood drive. It's at uh, uh, campus at SCC, at the Pearl Building. Anybody has the timing, go by there and donate blood. It's really important. And when you do that, make sure you tell them that your selecting agency is the Civil Police Department, because we need to show all the other first responder agencies uh, who's who. So if you do that, definitely appreciate it. Um, it's on our Facebook page if you want to see the times and hours and all that, so walk-ins are able to do that. And you get a free t-shirt, huh? So um, just want to talk real quick about staffing. Uh, we're in a, we're in a tough spot, a police force right now staffing-wise. We're missing uh, about a quarter of our staff. But uh, we have, we're bringing on two right now, and I gotta tell you, I'm very proud of both those applicants. We, we couldn't fill these positions sooner than we have, but we are very selective about who we hire. And so that's for a very good reason. It just, we pay the price during that time whenever we're looking for those, those applicants that really fit what our community needs. And so uh, we've, we bring it up in mind.
We're just talking this.
So right now, tough time for us. The administration is, our man staffer, the one's filling in these empty shifts for the most part. And that makes it, that's a struggle, and it slows us down a little bit, but uh, didn't, didn't break our, our officers' backs. We don't have people working a crazy amount of hours and a crazy amount of days in a row. It helps out with that, but um, but the future right now looks really good. So as soon as we get some of these people on board, uh, it's gonna be police officers that we can be proud of. Job for us. And so we're just gonna kind of pay the price for that right now. So um, busy as always, as, as the, as the weather warms up, our calls go up, just, just the same. So um, we are experiencing increases in everything, but that's, that's to be expected for us. And also just a, a note on our community care program. Uh, you guys know this, this, there's, we have an embedded social worker and it's got a lot of attention in locally, a lot of attention statewide. And uh, our folks, I didn't go because of staffing issues, but we were invited to present nationally at a conference. So that's, Silva's being represented to, to the whole country uh, for this, this program as well. Truly be part of, part of it with so many successes. So kudos to the team for that. Like I said, I would have loved to win, but it's just one of the good times leadership allows I need to be. So kudos to the team for that. Like I said, I would have loved to win, but it's just one of the good times, leadership allows I need to be. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, sir. Fire Department, support.
Morning. Oh, I was also gonna talk about Battle of the Badges. Chris beat me to it. Only thing I'll say is that if you do go and donate, we sort of select fire parts. I'll echo it also, another thing Chris said, it is getting busier this time of year. Through the summer, we, our call volumes went up too. We're at 554 for the year already. That's probably 150 ahead of last year. So that's not really good, but that's really the truth. And I guess that's the indication that we have, do have more residents than we used to have, and that might be the thing. So really, that's about all I was gonna report today too, so if you have any questions.
Well, thank you. Great report.
Good morning. I just got back from the Investing in Rural America Conference in Roanoke, and I learned a lot to put in practice here at home about resources to improve our, kind of from a different lens and the, and the federal aspects of things that we can tap into. So that was really good. Also, we're launching the third phase of our coworking feasibility study that includes an incubation program with, along with a partnership with Western Carolina University. So this will enable all the stakeholders to assess costs and revenue projections to determine the right strategy and the properties that we're looking at to launch the program. And the Building Outdoor Communities Program that we've been doing in joint partnership with Jackson County. The court just concluded with a regional workshop on how to use the new economic impact tools created by a team at Appalachian State University. So the team conducted a survey across twenty-five Western North Carolina counties and a valid boundary. And this data is used in the tool relative to our particular county. So I'm gonna pass out some things to you guys with some, some of that aggregate data from the whole West and Jackson County in particular. And the reason why this is so important is if we're thinking about a project like a Greenway or a Backcountry Trail or the, the Whitewater Center in Dillsborough, we can actually plug these numbers and costs into the tool and come up with whether it's gonna be a good return on investment or not. I, I've never seen anything like this, and I'm so grateful to these folks for, for providing this for us. So I'm gonna ask you guys just to take these and take a look at it at your leisure. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me. Anything else? Do you have any questions for anything? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Awesome.
I do not have a report. Their budget is also available to review.
So that just concludes our report. These are some of the new business. And, oh god. The board department is the next thing up, like Paige will give us a little direction on that.
So we're going to pass out these ballots. You'll vote. Amanda will review the votes. Let me know, Paige. Oh, we've got the names. Jonathan Brown, Sarah Hirsch, and Luther Jones. You'll fold it and hold it up in the air. When you're ready, we'll make your list.
I've already, you've got my hand.
Sorry about that.
Do we just, I've already started signing this.
Hold on, we'll get the right ones.
Okay.
You'll give me the ones that we toss.
Definitely move down, and give me twos.
Yes, that's in case we have the best ones.
I have one.
You will be the last. Sorry, I was trying to tell them.
Yeah.
These votes will be read in no particular order. They will state the commissioner name and who that commissioner voted for. Commissioner Estridge, Jonathan Brown. Commissioner Jones, Jonathan Brown. Commissioner Waldrip, Sarah Hirsch. Commissioner Gelbach, Jonathan Brown. Jonathan Brown, we do your next commissioner.
Yeah, new commissioner, Jonathan. Congrats, love.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Those, we were not successful, there are all other things that can be done and served on with our town. We feel that I have to serve them all, if the thing's plausible, then other things, so always be encouraged to apply. So moving on, um, to the Main Street Association Board of Ball. This has been discussed to some degree. It was mentioned that sort of the consensus that, that everybody was okay with Blitz replacing Natalie on downtown association board. I guess that's the other side of motion, if we do that. I'll make that motion, right? Have a motion, we have any discussion. Then no discussion, I will favor Ray Jean's staff. I'll vote by a lifetime. No one cares. The Southwestern Home Consortium Board of Ball is also a board replacing Natalie. And Paige has volunteered to serve in that role. And I thought it would be a good, good way to feel that for that. Any comments from board members out there? Anybody want to serve on? Are you good with Paige? Yeah. So identify a motion that we appoint our city management page down to serve on the home consortium.
If I can make that motion.
Have a motion, we have any discussion. I will favor Ray Jean's staff. I'll oppose by a lifetime, motion carries. MSSA facade grant approval is just a final vote of approval and plan and senior package. Everybody should have opportunity to read it. Where it hopes that this is a successful program. Or that's doing a fine job of private implementing all that.
I'll, I'll, that can present on Mars.
Okay, would you like to speak to that, Byron Bill?
Sure. So this is an ongoing program. We've had three applications to date. And just to remind everyone that we received thirty thousand dollars in grant funding from the TBA and the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina to fund this. So the way the program works is if they meet the requirements of the facade and what they're gonna do, they will get a one-to-one match up to three thousand dollars from us. So the design committee explored this at length from the three applications that we received. Had a lot of questions, it was a really good discussion. The three that we have for you today, six twenty-nine and six thirty-three West Main is the building that Jay Spiro owns, where Southern and Sunkist is. That building is going to be completely repainted, so it'll look really, really nice. It's already painted. We try to preserve brick when it's not painted. The second one is the visitor's center. Jackson County Chamber of Commerce is, is in there, and they would like to improve their facade with outdoor improvements. That visitor's center is, is the facade of downtown Silva. And so the, the things that they want to do will enhance what they've already put into it, which is about twelve thousand dollars of improvements. And we will match the additional improvements that they want to do for the outdoor patio and welcome center. And then the third is six seventeen West Main Street, where Matt Batter and Lacy Hyperarch in the Evans own that building. And she's going to do new awnings, freshened up with frameworks and that sort of. Be for your consideration.
So you need a motion involved for these three or for several in just.
These three.
There's this group.
Yeah, program.
So I'll identify a motion that we approve these three applications for the facade grant. I got that motion. Have a motion, we have any discussion. I will favor Ray Jean's staff. I oppose by a lifetime, motion carries. Um, and our third thing is I will entertain a motion that we approve the proclamation designated in June as Pride Month. I'll make that motion, done. Have a motion, we have any discussion. I will favor Ray Jean's staff. I'll vote by a lifetime, motion carries. The added item to our agenda is our item fourteen, which will be a closed session. And.
You have that general statute?
You have it?
I don't.
I'm good. I'm good. No, I would entertain a motion that we introduce both sections sent to General Statute one four three four three, on eight, statute eleven, eight and three. I'll make that motion. That, have a motion, we have any discussion. I will favor Ray Jean's staff. I oppose by a lifetime, motion carries. For this town, everyone that's not staff or a board member or daygaver.